In select board meeting for February seventh, two thousand twenty-three to order, we'll call Jake Thompson, Leslie Dyer, Don Young, myself, Pam Alley, Elizabeth Bunker, W. Town Clerk taking minutes, and Marjorie Stratton, Town Manager. Prove the agenda. Any additions?
Can we just add the see under seven C, C level rise committee? Please.
I move we approve the agenda. Is amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Right. Number three, approve the minutes from the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three select meeting, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Number four, approve and sign treasurer's warrants in the thirty-two. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I think it's just three signatures.
Uh, not yet. That was still going through stuff. But we get them within the meeting. Uh, number five, communications.
None.
All right. Number six, speakers from the floor. All right. Number seven, committee department reports appointment, seven A, Lanes Island Stewardship Committee, Dottie Tassilo and.
So I've had two people request to be on that committee. We currently have four members and three vacancies, and those are just annual appointments. So there were all, both of the appointments would be through June of twenty twenty-three, and then they would. So Dottie, Tassilo, and Lenell Mather.
All right, uh, I make a motion, we appoint Dottie Tassilo and Lenell Mather to the Lanes Island Stewardship Committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven B.
And then I had Banner Moffett come forward and asked to be on the Budget Committee. Um, the Budget Committee is.
Pretty much empty.
I don't think.
Pretty much empty, right?
Yeah, I mean Eric has been participating. I haven't heard from Bill Alcorn. Marka Querly has been in and she has reviewed her book.
She was at one of our meetings via Zoom too.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but other than that. So anyway, um.
Hmm, exactly. I was just agreeing with D W when he said if anybody wants to be on it, we would agree to.
Right.
That.
But then I'll just have a discussion with them to say that unfortunately, we're supposed, if there is a Budget Committee ordinance too, it's, you know, it's not just a what, I don't know, it's a, it's an ordinance that was passed at town meeting. But anyway, there's supposed to be nine members, so. You know, it's hard to get a quorum if we don't have any members.
You have nine members, you have that five for a forum.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the ordinance that way.
I think we should look at changing that number down to seven or five.
We might have to, that's a reach.
Well, I mean, if you had it at five, then three would be a forum. So I mean, that's what we have. I don't think nine seems a little high if we can only get four or five people to sign up, or that we maybe we should.
Listen.
Move, we appoint Vander Moffett to the Budget Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Well, the next time we have like a public hearing or anything, they slap that.
Change it from nine down to five.
Or, yeah.
Or seven or something, it should be lower than nine.
Term, there's twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I move we appoint Banner Moffett to the Budget Committee for a term ending in June of twenty twenty-five.
And then there is only.
One second.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor? All right, there we go.
And there's only one vacancy on the Sea Level Rise Committee, and we had two people. Um, the, um, the committee, the chair and co-chair of the Sea Level Rise Committee had recommended Molly Miller. And then I did get a, a email just recently, uh, from Aviva Ramani. But where the committee chair and co-chair recommended Molly, I think we should respect their proposal.
I agree. Um, I move we appoint Molly Miller to the Sea Level Rise Committee for a term ending.
Oh, um. It would be twenty twenty-three.
Uh, in term ending in June of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Main Water Proposal for an additional full-time employee and recommendation, recommendation to the water selectmen.
So I had brought this to you previously, and then you asked, uh, for the, um, sewer commissioners to meet and give me a recommendation. Um, sorry, I'm gonna get to there. So they met on February first, and I, what I've given you is a copy of their motion to recommend to the select board to approve Main Water Company hiring an additional full-time employee uh, at an annual additional cost of thirty-one thousand six hundred to the wastewater department, yeah.
Do you need a motion from us following that?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, if you wanted to just read the same.
All right, I move that we approve Main Water Company hiring an additional full-time employee at an annual additional cost of thirty-one thousand six hundred to the wastewater department of the town of Bylhaven.
A question.
Yep.
What's that? Do we, do we have enough money to handle that within the water department?
Yeah, I can, um, I budgeted really more than, um, I needed, uh. Of course, it's all funded by user fees instead of by taxation or fund balance or anything.
The funds are there.
But the funds are there for the rest of the year, and then, of course, when we start the new budget in July, we'll add that additional amount in.
If they could buy someone.
Right.
Um.
But even.
It's not always easiest to find someone to fill a position. Even if, yeah, even if the, if.
Hopefully.
Regenerated, it wouldn't come from taxation, it would come from the user.
Hopefully they can find somebody.
Yeah. Um, so motions out there, so.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right. Nine, new business. Uh, now we're into the budget. Nine A, professional services legal fees.
So this is with the twenty, the current budget, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I got another bill from Drummond at Woodson on the, um, Hurricane Halibut for eighty, eighty-four hundred dollars, and we are already over expended on that line by almost five thousand. So I don't think we have any solution other than to have another, uh, special town meeting, because I, even as treasurer, I'm not authorized to pay out money for, um, areas that I don't have an appropriation of funds. I mean, I know on one, on the one hand, we have to pay our bills, but on the other hand, it's, we can't, um, without an appropriation of money, I can't really spend, spend it.
Why, why was it another eight thousand? I thought they said like three months ago when we met with them that, once they submitted that thing, which they already had, that the fees would be next to nothing until they actually went to.
Unless that's just a catch-up.
This was part of that law court thing. Re- review, record briefing, and applicable legal precedent. Review, record briefing, prepare for and participate in oral argument. This is all that Maine Supreme Judicial Court.
So they've already.
This was in, this is the bill from December.
Right, that's when we talked about binding everything and getting it over with. Yeah. So is there any, no, nothing about how much? Is there any? Is there any information about, it's just an invoice, right? Does it say anything about how they're proceeding or how much longer it will be? No, no.
It's really up to the courts at this point.
Yeah.
Wait. If they made an oral argument, it should be.
I think the judge will make a decision soon.
So must, it must have been presented.
That's what, uh, you, you said that they made an oral argument, right? Or before they prepared for, or did they actually make them? I couldn't tell by what you read.
I assume if they.
Preparation for and participation in oral argument.
So there should be a decision coming maybe this month, next month.
Or some time in the spring, I would think.
I would hope so. That was in December.
That should be the end of the legal fees on it. If they've gone to the top court they can go to. Unless you go.
Unless it's federal, we have to meet with the players again.
I don't.
For a final.
Right, but it shouldn't be that much.
Be an hour or two, maybe.
Is it worth having a quick review of them just to kind of get them to explain?
I don't want to spend any more money with them. If, if we have them come to our meeting.
There is a meeting, it's to change.
Right, but boy, they seem to be uncontrolled.
Well, this all started back in twenty nineteen.
It's been going on a long.
Before my time, um.
Yeah, so basically what we have to do is make a motion to a, a lot of funds and have a special town meeting.
Oh, we have, how much are we talking? I mean, you said we're, that's for eighty-four hundred and fifty, is there any?
Three hundred. Well, on the budget report, we've, we're over, we're already over expended on that line.
Yeah.
By four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yep.
So we need to appropriate more money for the legal. And unfortunately, this throws us over on the engineering side as well, even though we haven't, we've kind of kept to our budget on that, but um. I'd have to just do, try to do the best analysis I could. I mean, there's always general things that come up. I mean, there was a fifty-three dollar bill that came in on a land use violation, but I mean, fifty-three dollars. It's just something that came up.
So what do we have to ask for, though? I guess is what we, hmm, we don't want to have to go by.
It's like, I know this, I, yeah, right.
So.
So.
I guess I'll have to ask them what their expectation is. And so.
So that's thirteen.
You can't charge me for asking this question.
Right.
That's a email.
How much does an email cost?
Already thirteen, thirteen hundred.
Do they itemize?
That's eight, so that's fourteen. Plus, we don't even know what's gonna be coming for the rest of the year. I would think we just have to ask for another.
I know the legal is over, but the total for professional services, we're, it's only like five K, so we need another thirteen, four.
Yeah, but you don't think there's gonna be.
I would think we'd have to ask for twenty to twenty-five.
Yeah, and so you don't think there's gonna be any more.
No, I, I think there's gonna be more, that's.
But I was thinking at least twenty.
Yeah, minimum, but I don't know, that would be enough.
They're looking. I thought we added some money to this budget when we got. That's for the next fiscal budget. Oh, that can't go in on this year.
No. We underestimated where our legal fees are gonna be. A substantial amount.
Yes, they all charge a hundred and seventy dollars an hour.
So, so does an email constitute one hour, I wonder?
Usually they go by six, the tenths of an hour.
Yeah.
Like one text message is usually.
Fifteen minutes.
Is usually, uh, they usually do one, six, they usually go by ten minutes, but it usually takes them two minutes to read one and send one back, and it will cost you forty dollars.
Uh, anything for the downtown project from Drummond and Woodson, which is, uh, having to do with our easements that we need. I've been putting that under the planning budget just to try to, you know. Anyway. But I can't put this under the plan. I can't.
No.
The Hurricane Island.
No, we need to go for approval. And be able to explain.
So, um.
We're gonna have a special time meeting. We should also put on reducing the budget committee if we have to do it soon.
Yeah, might as well.
Yeah.
I should have two, two things on that. I don't think that reducing the budget committee from nine to five is gonna be very controversial. No one wants to be on it.
What do you think, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, the way it's been the last few years, no one's, you know, trying to get on it or even really getting all that involved, so.
But I mean, then if you could meet with three people instead of having to have five. I mean, we can go to seven, do you think you, four, I would think, that's what I was thinking.
That's my.
Um. Well, when do you think you might want to do that? Have a special time.
Before March, before March.
I'll say we probably need to do it soon.
Yours even next week.
Good.
I have to have time, I have to post it for at least.
Two weeks.
I have to get you to sign it, and then I have to post it for at least a week.
A week, okay.
Our next meeting would be. Do you think it would be appropriate to just send an email to them, ask if they have any idea when it might?
I think I should, even though they're gonna charge us.
And then that way, at least we'd have some idea on what to ask for at the meeting.
Right now, it's minimum twenty, twenty K.
Mm-hmm.
That's probably have to be more than like thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Considering we still have what this month, and then.
We'd just be asking to take it off fund balance, right? That's all we do.
Correct.
For this.
Not to. Yeah, are we meeting on the fourteenth or the twenty-first?
Oh, that was another question I had. I was a, I'm a little, uh, I don't know when our next meetings are, so we had decided for this meeting to be a regular meeting and to do some budget work if we could. But then where do we go from tonight as far as selectmen's meetings, regular and or budget?
Make sure we just go back to the regular two weeks, that, I know, we don't need to meet every week, do we, to go over the budget?
So we'll meet on the twenty-first?
I think so, unless in other schools, we need to meet more frequently to get through the budget faster, or.
Would we just do the special meeting before that?
Before our regular select board meeting?
I mean, we should, in two weeks, we should have a better idea of what we need to ask.
Oh, we have to.
Yes.
We have to actually put out, what is it, a warrant, not a warrant, uh?
I have to, uh, write up a, um, the town warrant, special town meeting warrant.
Right, that's, yeah, I thought that's.
So there'll be two or three articles. And then you have to approve that and sign it. And then it has to be posted for a week before the actual um, special town meeting.
We should, the special town meeting on the seventh.
Today's the seventh.
I'm, if you're going every two weeks for the regular meetings.
Gone.
I'll be gone.
Well.
I'll be here.
We'll have three of us.
I mean, I can still zoom in, probably.
I mean, if you saw, if you both are here to sign the.
I'll be here to sign it.
Sign it.
Before, I'll, I'll be, I'll be leaving on, I'll be here the twenty eighth, or no, twenty first.
Yep.
So the twenty first and the seventh.
Yeah, I, I think we can just go back to our regular, every two weeks.
Six and seven.
So. And just put budget things in as I, as we can.
Mm.
Okay.
That was the same day that we were planning, or we initially discussed meeting with the sheriff as well. I thought that was the seventeenth or.
That was the twenty first.
Twenty first, okay.
I, I can't, I put two different numbers.
Can't remember either.
Okay, I gotta check in with them. scheduled meeting for February twenty-first in the mornings.
For twenty first.
Right, so.
So we're gonna sign a warrant in two weeks and then have a special time meeting in two weeks.
Handle, so hopefully we have enough information by the twenty first to know.
Okay.
But when is the bill due now? Pay on receipt or?
Usually thirty days.
Yeah, but I mean, if they're gonna charge us two percent.
That's after thirty days, though. It should say on the invoice, whether, whatever.
One point five percent if not paid within thirty days.
And what do they date it?
The, oh, this is dated January thirty-first.
Uh, so we have, so, yeah, yeah, March, basically.
We don't have till March seventh, no, we don't.
Hmm.
Next week.
I'll work it out, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Well, we have to have one on the fourteenth and the twenty-first, if we have to, we could always at the next or the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth, I mean, we could always move it up a week, because that would be before the thirty days, and it's the thirty-first, we have until March second, so we could always, if we have to.
If we need to have a special time being on the twenty-eighth, right?
We can just come up here for two things real quick and.
Yep.
Go over.
Yep.
Or three things, technically, so what the first thing's always elect.
A hundred, right?
So by the twenty-first, we should know.
Right, how much?
How much, if we need the twenty eighth or not.
You think they give us a little leeway?
I know.
Okay.
I mean, if we were like sixty to ninety days late, that'd be different. If you're a couple of days late, they usually pretty, most businesses are, but either the lawyers. They still have to live in these meetings, so.
So, um, I'm sorry.
Um, is that all on nine A? Do you have more?
Yeah, that's all.
All right, so nine B, budget workshop.
So, um, I've finished the town.
Sorry, I interject for just a second.
Millie asked if the town crew could talk. She had surgery while she's on here, she's tired.
Hi, Millie.
So they want to do the town.
That's so.
Budget, is that what?
The chair.
We, we, um, we have an issue we need to discuss very quickly, and then, uh, you guys could go about your business.
Sure, of course.
That'd be okay. Um, we noticed, uh, last week that the pickup truck was sitting a little funny, progressively worse and worse, tilting to one side. Um, we had Jake put it up on a lift the other day, and we found the frame to be, uh, broken. And it's in a spot that's not weldable. Um, right up on the front. Um, Dusty probably can give you more information on it. But, um, the truck should not be driven at this point and is non-fixable. And I love dropping that right now, not exactly what anybody wants to hear, including us, so. Um. It's like, if Dusty could interject a little bit, we, we have looked at, um, trucks, uh, comparable and thank goodness, then at the cost of a dump truck, um, but we should be moving on something soon.
Okay. Have we contacted insurance company?
It's not gonna be an insurance deal, it's normal wear and tear.
Okay.
Which is unfortunate, but every broken frame in history that we've had has been a just normal wear and tear. We were hoping to get another year or two out of this truck. You know, that was the plan, and it's just, I think the salt and all of, you know, the salt and the sand just eat away at these things, no matter how much we treat them and wash them. Um, but it is, uh, it's two thousand twelve's. But, uh, anyway, um, Dusty has a couple quotes on, uh, replacement trucks and some thoughts of, uh, what we can maybe do. Uh, I know we're gonna put the eighty-five hundred out to bid, um, we could probably put this truck out to bid as well. Um, but he has paperwork in front of him, I believe. So, um, if that's okay, I'll let him take over.
Sure. Dusty.
Chevron has first only one ton towables this, there's Dodge, there's no Chevys around anywhere within five or mile, all everywhere. Well, there's a Dodge snow cab at Shepherd's for sixty-three, eight thirty-three. Then take two grand off to take the bed off and sell it without the bed. Taking the one off, our pickup. Put it on that, new one. But all kinds of, you put on the bed, all you know, to buy them. Our truck was, I bet on it.
Right.
You know. And then, we thought, I called Westford Lee has a crew cab for sixty-one uh, four thirty-five, but with dock fees. Also done, uh, sixty-two, one eighty-three. One thirty-eight, sorry, sixty-two, one thirty-eight. And that standard will fit in that truck and who knows? That's a Ford one. And that would, we better activate because if we went out and had to do something, we would fit more people instead of, and taking three trucks to somewhere.
Yep.
Take one.
Yep.
And that's a Dodge?
That's a Dodge, it's a thirty-five hundred Dodge Ram, tradesman edition or package, whatever.
Um, there's a huge shortage on heavy-duty trucks right now, uh, three-fifties. Um, Lee, Lee said they, they'd sooner catch a million dollars right now than a, than a heavy-duty truck, um. They don't expect any in for six months or better. Um, but Dusty did a great job calling around. He also priced out plows for it as well, because obviously it's gonna have to come with a plow if we get it.
Yeah. You. For a plow and install it is nine thousand three hundred and thirty, thirty, thirty dollars.
Please, Pam.
The, uh, nine five point six feet, nine and a half, B, uh, B two, X B two, uh, steel V plow. That goes on, or heavier, I read for a one-ton truck.
And that plow can go on either of these Dodge vehicles.
Yes, okay.
The trucks are essentially the same trucks, they're just, uh, one's a crew cab and one's not, so.
To me, I, yeah. I was.
And it's.
Yeah, the single cab is actually more comfortable than the crew cab.
That's what I saw.
I, I don't check out with the dealership too, when he said that's what it is, so.
Okay.
It might be just having a deal, because they got, um, it's a MSRP is sixty-four, nine, but, uh, fifty-five. Total sale rebate is thirty-five hundred, that brings it down to sixty-one, four thirty-five. Dock fees are six forty-nine, and government fee is thirty-four, so it brings it to sixty-two, one thirty-eight, the crew cab.
Okay.
And, um, and the real-time price for the uh, and Shepherd's, the silk cabs sixty-four, ten. Sale price is sixty-three thirty-four, um, thirty-five, yeah, sixty-three, three hundred and fifty-five, four. And then dock fees of four seventy-nine, bring it to sixty-three, eight eighty, eighty-three. But if they take that off, they'll give us two grand and and the rebate, but the stand-ups on, or other one on it.
Yeah.
But then if you try to sell this one, our pickup now, without a bed, I don't think you'd get too many offers.
How many offers are we gonna get with a broken frame?
I was gonna say, what, what's?
Well, I think, I mean, you know, there might be a trap truck or somebody might want it for a plow truck.
Here, yeah, okay.
It's not like, it's not for, for us, it's, you know, for.
For the town.
Wow.
Wow, yeah, yeah.
At the eighty-five hundred, the, um, we're gonna stack the bids on that at ten grand. So that will cover the cost of the plow. I don't know if that works out that way or not. Sorry, my voice is, my voice is going, but, um, you know, it's, it's terrible situation, I just don't know. We, we, we need the truck, we can't get into some of these roads. And unfortunately, the roads out here are so treacherous that I think it's, it just beats the heck out of them until they break.
Last, they could hold any trucks, and they said no, but we said for five hundred dollars, they could hold it for a month, the crew cab.
A month.
What if that road repair account, it kind of out in left field to buy a truck out of that, but.
Well.
I mean, we put the twenty and thirty thousand dollars every year that the state gives us to to plow and maintain their roads, so I mean, isn't that where we put that money?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be that far out in left field.
Well, you there was two, there was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand appropriated
We have a balance.
For that account, and they, I'm sorry.
Is it, which count do we put that, twenty?
I think you're right, I think it's the road repair. I mean. I mean.
I mean, that's. Plowing and ditching and doing everything to the state roads that they don't do, so. Technically. That truck does bow on those roads, so it wouldn't be. Wouldn't be that far of a stretch, I would think.
I mean, we've only. With that two, two thirty-nine, we only had expenditure of seven seventy, seventy-seven K, so we have like a hundred and sixty-two K left. We planned on additional road repairs within this budget year that would severely.
Millie, they were talking about that road repair account where there's. The appropriation was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
We've spent, um, I'm sorry, where am I? We've spent, um.
About third. Just over seventy-seven thousand.
Seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah.
I don't know what, in the next four months.
The only, I mean, there might be a. A cover repair or something like that, but nothing um, of any major. Major goings until, you know, until summer at least.
I mean, if we sell the, the eighty-five hundred in this current. That'll cover the cost of the plow and bring a little bit down from the. Cost of the truck, so.
You think you'd still have a hundred?
Hundred K left to do road repair.
That's more, more than enough for, for this year, for four months.
Alright, I mean, I. Choice to a hell, I. I think that's. I mean, I guess if people really wanted to. Get technical about it, it's not. Road repair, but as Jake pointed out. We use some of that money to maintain the road, the state aid roads, so.
There's money in there for equipment rental.
Yeah, that's the excavator rental, but.
What do you think, Eric? Is it too much of a stretch?
Right, it is, it is for the road.
You put that. Five and thirty thousand, you're getting a state in that budget every year to maintain their roads, plow them and. Sand them and. I mean, I would, I wouldn't think you're getting. Too far out of it, like you said, it's not like we're spending it on an ambulance. We're spending it or a trash come back or whatever, but.
Right.
Spending on a plow truck.
Well, let's. Can I, um, I'm sorry, do I just add up? Do you have figures on what you're proposing?
I would go with the crew cab, Dusty.
Yeah, the four door crew cab, right?
Yeah.
Sixty-two, one thirty-eight. Plus HP's quote. Wow, nine.
Nine, three, three.
Yeah, I'm assuming this is new, not used. It's brand new, brand new.
So twenty twenty-two, sorry.
And seventy-one, four sixty-eight.
Sixty-two.
So it's seventy-one thousand four sixty-eight, but I mean, there's always something extra.
That's the uh, so that's the. Purchased right there.
We've, um, we've, we'll strip the pickup truck too.
Seventy-one, there were sixty-eight.
Well, not one of.
We don't have sales tax.
Right, the white ones coming with the bed. So that's the crew cab, it's coming with the bed.
So we'd sell the other truck with the stainless steel bed on it, or we take that off and put it on something else?
Uh, so.
If it, if it comes down, yeah, if it comes down to it, we could. We could take it off and put it on this truck, but um. Like Dusty said, is that it might not sell.
Yeah, you don't think it'll fit?
Just stick over, let's stick up quite, quite a bit.
Okay.
Those uh, eight foot, just six and a half.
Oh, yeah.
The new truck has a six and a half foot bed.
Mm-hmm, but you're saying it fits in this one, right?
Right, it'll fit in, in either one of them.
Yeah.
And the eight foot bed, we have to put a block.
Oh.
So it's stick up.
It's definitely six and a half, but some of those crew cabs come with five and a half.
Yeah, that's what mine is. Okay.
As long as the sand will fit in.
Right.
Right.
You said the sand would set?
Yes, yes.
Great, well. I move. We use funds from the road repair. Budget. To purchase. The. Dodge Ram four door crew cab. At sixty-two thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars. And as well as a new plow and install the plow for nine thousand three hundred thirty dollars for a total of seventy-one thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars. And additionally, any monies that are received from the sale of the two trucks that we are talking about selling would go back into that budget line. All is in favor.
So, um.
Um, you need to sign Marjorie the uh, purchase and sales agreement in my behalf. So we can fax it back.
That's the uh, shepherd.
I'm sorry.
I can, I can have a fax over one week and sign everything tomorrow.
This is from front of the words. We can get.
Anyway, that is what it is, right?
Fortunately, so.
Well, you don't wanna have to buy when. Emergency comes up, but.
Right.
It happens, so. We are.
Appreciate you guys understanding and helping us out with the. Thank you, folks, I'm signing off.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
See ya.
See ya.
Alright. More of the budget?
Do you, I finished the town property section and the law enforcement section as far as I could get.
That's. Helen, you're welcome to stay, but if you don't want to, you could also.
See you, thank you.
We do one. Is the first one.
Town law.
Town property. Under town properties, these are all the town owned properties and uh, structures that aren't in other budgets. Um, this is the town war, and as I understand it. Um, this includes the parking lot work as well. And I guess one thing that I would like to note is that, you know, we've pretty much depleted our harbor reserve. Appro, uh, transferring most of it into the downtown project, so. In terms of appropriating funds. For harbor, you know, major harbor expenditures, I think. We're gonna have to. Put a, a large amount of money back in that reserve. Um, the only thing I put in, I've left in this account is money for a float. But. As again, I think we're gonna, when we get over to the capital project. Uh, appropriations, I think we're gonna be looking at, you know. A major appropriation to the harbor reserve, or at least that's gonna be my recommendation. Because that is pretty much been depleted. Um, so this is, you know, this is the sewer line down there, the hoists.
Why is there sewer line over there? What does the sewer line go to?
There's a sewer hookup, um, when the uh, project originated. Um, we left the, a stub there because the thought was that someday we would have a, um. Like a harbor master building, or so we're paying to have. That opportunity to um, utilize the sewer hookup. Is that?
Is that in the middle of that parking lot?
It's in the middle of that. Yes, yes. So that was the thought and we, we installed a stub there so that for the, in the future, we could. Put us some sort of structure with a bathroom in that. It's never happened, um. Since then, the, the conversations have always been, we don't, we don't want another building there. But nevertheless. The opportunity is there to have a structure. Um, for an office, a bathroom, I don't know, whatever you envisioned, it was the, um. The thought was another public bathroom. I don't know if anybody recalls, but we had to tear down that structure because of black mold. And we had a few employees that got sick, I mean, that we're talking years ago. But we had to take down that structure because it was unsafe for anybody to work in there.
Is, is five sixty is, is this the payment on a past expenditure or is this, what is this?
It's a quarterly main water wastewater invoice.
So for what, for what, for what service?
Just to have the stub there. The opportunity to hook into the public sewer.
That doesn't make a lot of sense. But it wasn't.
Is that service fee, Marjorie?
Hmm.
Is that the debt service? See.
It would be both the, um. It's a hundred and forty per quarter, so it would be the, those two fixed fees, it's the fixed fees. And if, I mean.
Not a lot of money, but.
It's an opportunity. For the town to maintain. That, um, the expectation that there may someday be a, a hookup there.
So what happens if you don't pay it? Well, they take the stub out, get rid of that thing in the middle of the parking lot, so.
I don't know if it works that way, does it?
Suppose you could ask the wa, well, the wastewater department is a department of the town. It's like we're paying ourselves, so. It's, it's not like we're paying an outside entity, we're paying our, it, the money goes into. The wastewater department. If you will.
Yeah.
Uh, to add. It's like. We. We also added in more users. To the, for instance, to the library, um, wastewater bill. Because it was an opportunity for the town to contribute to, uh. The wastewater department. Um, I mean, if we look at the water consumption at the library, there's hardly any. You know, so if you base the number of users on that, we're paying more than we should. But it was an opportunity for the town to make a little bit bigger contribution. To the wastewater department, and again, the wastewater department is the town of Vinyl Haven, so it's like. The town is paying the town, it's just a different department. Under, uh, uh, by paying user fees.
So what basically, actually subsidizing the yield of, of the, the uh. Is that ethical?
I think it's important for the town to, um. Contribute. Why, why wouldn't it be ethically, you know?
It's. It's subsidizing another service and it's really kind of above. Not, it's not above board in the reality, but not a lot of money, but it's, I just think it's. It's a conflict, in my estimation.
I don't see a conflict, I don't know. It's, it's our, it's the town of Vinyl Haven system. How is it a conflict to? Contribute to?
You're paying for services that you're not using. And for that entity, so again, I'm not gonna make a.
For that entity.
A lot of time, I just don't think we should be doing it.
But we're paying ourselves. What a service that's not being used as an?
What, we're not, is. We're paying money into a department. And we're basically subsidizing the current users of the sources from by doing so.
And why is that wrong? If you're helping the system in general. Anyway, uh, should I go on or, um? Do you want me to? What do you think, D W? What, what, what do you want me to do?
Well, what's the big increase, I guess?
Oh, what's the big increase?
You know, overall, what's up twenty-three percent, it says it's the flow. Looks like.
Oh, the old fire hall to get those renovations done.
Oh, the painting and whatnot.
And then the thoroughfare lease.
Thoroughfare, we need to um, replace that, well, Jim can explain that. At the thoroughfare, we need to replace that ramp. You wanna talk about that?
Yes, please.
It's not safe. Top railings. But so overall, I've got a nice. That whole structure, Australia. That should be metal, the metal rating, ramp should be replaced. And actually, the fault, the floor doesn't much either, and that should be replaced. The whole thing, but really should be replaced.
I thought we just put a new floor up there.
Yeah, but. Sometime take a drive up and.
No, I just didn't, I thought we did put a new floor up there, not to.
It's a piece of crap.
Oh.
Need, the whole thing needs to go. That's my personal opinion.
So the.
I took Stiloff, he up, he looked at it. Now, of course, he's a, that's what he does, make a living. But I wouldn't have him up there if I didn't think it was a piece of crap. And it is, it's a. It should be all that, that wall plate, it's all icing, we've had complaints about it, railing going down, it's. Somebody slips and fall and go through that railing, they can break that back. Uh, it's not safe, in my opinion, it's, it's not safe, the ramp. I had him go up and, and repair the top of the, the metal ramp going up, that goes into the dock. In this, he says it's not right. It's temporarily, it's temporarily safe. Now, in his opinion. The float. Never float down at the harbor wall, it's got metal on it. And I would think with the. Traffic going back and forth there, civilian traffic, uh. Back and forth in winter. You don't, you don't want people going down there and falling on the raft, you don't want to do it. You don't want someone going down the ramp, falling down, going through the side of rail. But uh, the whole thing should be replaced. That's my opinion, and I had an estimate here on philosophy, just for the ramp and the. The top piece done like I just described. And she said something about having money in the. In the account for a float, well, if we're gonna have a float anywhere, I think it'd be more priority instead of downtown for now. Instead of having folks downtown, the folks that we have down there now, if they were. Surely could stand a couple more. But I think the priority should be given to up there, just the safety.
I would disagree with that.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just. I was going back to, I know it's on our side, but. Don't use that as well.
Not even as.
Yes. Like. I don't, why?
That was the original agreement, I thought.
It should be fifty fifty, but.
Twenty-five, I thought, isn't that what we were told?
Yeah, I mean, it should be fifty fifty, but whatever. Eric.
I think the argument always has been more, you know, we expect them to pay fifty percent of ours. And does that mean we now take on additional expense and pay fifty percent? Then does that mean we now take on additional expense and pay fifty percent?
On their side, okay, fair enough.
This, this has come up way back in the late eighties, you know?
Yeah, alright.
I agree with you saying, but then you say, okay, their item is gonna be, okay.
Well, we should go back to the tip for the wind turbines, go back to splitting that fifty fifty about that.
Well, in the meantime.
So what, what is the quote for the new ramp, walkway and float? Without the float?
His uh, his quote was.
Yeah, what, what?
His total project is between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars including the float.
Okay. So.
Whoever pays for it, if I may say, whoever pays for it, it's not, not to me, I don't know anything about that. I see it as a safety issue, and I think it takes priority.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm not saying that if it's a safety issue, then let's do it, and I know there have been complaints about it. I mean, the town, the town will pay for it, so.
But.
So my question on the float. If it needs, we need a new float. Is that float salvable in any way, or is it complete, like?
I don't know. It works.
Well, when, when we put this new float in like, three or four years ago, everyone complained about it because it was too high, couldn't get off. And on the boat, so it hasn't been.
Hasn't been that long, it's less than five years, right?
I would think like, three or four years, so, because then Floyd had a different. Float that he got from some summer person that they were getting rid of, that he put on the end in the summer, so there was a lower one.
Oh, we have two.
Really, I was getting is, if that could be used, they brought to town, could we use it in town, if we're gonna get.
It's slippery, it's how the, the only thing, I'm, the float itself, you get down there and. And I've done it myself, get down there and it's like, man, this is scary.
Is it just tippy?
No, it, it, when it's rough, I would, yeah, I'll tell you what, yeah.
Yeah.
It's scary to go down there on a chalky day, with a snowy icy day.
Mary Heardaby showed me pictures of from today, it was quite frightening.
So that float up there is no good anywhere?
Oh, I didn't, well, I just saw.
In that position for that, for right there.
We're up there is no good, could it be used, could it be used in the harbor down here?
I'm sure it could be used for something, I haven't really put in a lot of thought into it, to be honest with you.
Okay, so I know we need a couple more floats downtown here, so. If we could use that one instead of building three new floats.
It wouldn't look, it wouldn't match the.
Okay.
It wouldn't match what we've got, because we've got, what we've got is nice, looks good, and it would kind of throw everything off, but would it work, yeah?
Because it's higher, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because, because of the height, it's not gonna. So, but that float should still be in good shape, because it's not that old.
Sellable. Someone would buy it maybe, I don't know.
Well, alright, so that we can get some value out of that float somehow, alright, but this is just for the. New, this doesn't include a float, because that would be another what? Ten, fifteen?
Oh geez, I think that other one was sixteen, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think, I think you're talking fifteen.
Right, the one, the one that we bought for the ferryboat parking lot was like sixteen, yeah. But those are longer, I think, maybe. I'm not sure.
Yeah, how long is that float up there?
Those floats at the, by the ferry.
Yeah, the one that we bought was like twelve by forty or something, wasn't it? It's pretty long.
Oh, that's for the one for the harbor wall, you mean?
Yeah, something those.
For the harbor wall, maybe, but the other ones are twenty by ten.
Twenty by ten, I thought we bought a bigger one for somewhere.
Would a twenty by ten work up the thoroughfare?
Probably smell wider. If the stability is an issue with the uh.
So fifteen by twenty.
That's too small, isn't it?
Fifteen by, what are we talking?
It's still, we're gonna get the stability if you go wider, I think.
And having, and just having wood on it and. Going down that ramp and on a icy, snowy, cold day, going down a ramp, stepping down on there. Scared the living, for Jesus sake, I mean, I don't know. Think about somebody else, I mean, think about marriage, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Or somebody, I would like to see myself, I'd just like to see uh. Something that's safe, like maybe a metal like they got down to the harbor wall. They've got metal on the top down.
Yeah, Eric.
I think the reason they went so high could be because of a problem with the water. Swapping up onto it, and I think that's what Andy was thinking, because we used to get like a foot of ice on that thing and she'd be tipped.
Yeah.
Right down, but of course, I think it affected the stability by having a high one too.
Still getting covered with ice and.
Yeah, I don't know if the other one would be better, because it'd be more chance of the water draining down as opposed to lying on the wood than freezing, but.
I mean, you're gonna, I think you're gonna deal with ice up there in the winter time, no matter what. So, alright, but.
Hopefully it'll have a ladder.
What's in this budget, though, is only for the new walkway and.
Ramp.
And ramp. Do we wanna consider putting money in for another float?
Do we need permits to do all this, Marjorie?
I don't know, honestly, just to replace, to replace a structure is just a permit by rule, but. Do floats need a permit by rule? I don't recall, I don't think floats.
I, I just know that stuff over the waters. Not as easy as you would think it would be, but.
At the very least, it would be a permit by rule, which is an easy turnover with the E P, but I don't even think you need that for a float. If you're just replacing a float.
Structure and it's for safety reasons.
Did that can place bridge, it was all kinds of.
All right, yeah, but I don't think, I think.
Eric?
Yeah, I, I think long group like with any age like that structure, you don't have to do any separate.
But I mean, would you put it in right beside it, so you could use the old structure while you put in the new one, or?
You'd have to close it down for a few days. During the down season, like uh, what'd he say it was all? Summer time, you just can't do it because of the traffic.
Right, that's why I was wondering.
Be recommended like in March or.
Uh, do you know if this is still an accurate quote, because this is from July, last July?
Well, he, he took into consideration the uh inflation and all that, so.
Okay.
He took that in consideration at the time.
Could you check in with him that?
I haven't been able to hold him.
I know it's there because I was up there today with my husband and he was working.
Yeah, because this, this doesn't even total up to twenty, so I, I guess it's probably still within the range, hopefully it's on the lower end of.
I'd give not David one, but I just, I left a message for him to call him.
This isn't just to pay for that, I mean.
Right, well.
It could pay for other stuff too, you know?
I mean, this, the big increase in the budget is this, in another flow rate? Oh no, sorry, the old fire hall was the painting, okay.
Yeah, but this budget for, for the thoroughfare was ninety-three thou- nine thousand three hundred dollars last year, now it's roughly twenty thousand dollars higher than this year.
Yeah.
I can give a fresh estimate, right?
I'm sure it's pretty close, stuff hasn't changed that much since July.
It should be, should be pretty accurate, but I mean, if he, if he's willing to provide an updated one, that's, that would be appreciated, but.
And we have them for a four dollars.
Yeah, might as well, because if we're gonna put it all in the budget, let's have all in there and.
But I mean, asking what size he thinks would be the best for the conditions up there, because we tried this one a few years ago and made it higher. Trying to keep it from icing and people hated it, so we need to come up with something. In the middle, but. But I do, I do remember that this, when we put this float in. Four years ago at most, that we had some complaints that it was too high.
Too high.
Why not just put one in with a grate on top, instead of the. A grate. The water just go through it.
Yeah, the one downtown like twenty inches. And uh, the ones up there, maybe it's just a little bit higher.
Off the water, you mean?
The ones downtown.
Twenty inches off the water, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how tall that one is up there, but make it a little bit shorter, I guess.
Why not make it uh same as the other ones, kind of?
Yeah, the same, same as the ones downtown.
It's just them everywhere.
Right, yeah, no, I find okay, but I think.
Change, you know, if you wanted, you had to have new ones, then you could replace, if they're all the same size, you could switch them around.
Right, but I think Floyd built that one, didn't he, the one on that subject of their affair, I think.
I don't remember.
I think so.
I just remember that.
It's too high.
Um, yeah, that was too high was the biggest complaint.
The one downtown needs to be, have maintenance also, the one at the harbor wall, that needs to have maintenance. It's one of the front side of its boards are gone, I think that it needs to be cleaned. The ones down to the Saturday, they get hauled up this year, down to the uh, have Eagle parking lot, then we get hauled up this year, that was. A milli call, the ones down to the uh ferryboat, uh should be cleaned. And that's something that we can handle, it's not a big, it's not a big job, I talked to Pete about it, he said we just, he can deal with it, so.
For my bargain.
Just flip them over.
All that, but he, he can take care of a lot of that guy right here. But so having new floats down there, it'd be nice to have a couple more floats down there, but I just think that, that. North Haven thing should be more priority, that's why I'm here to say that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Alright, are there any more questions on town properties?
So that old fire hall one, that, that's gonna cover painting the whole building this time?
I think so.
Well, I put twenty-four thousand, I think.
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that it gets done, because we've been talking about this for. The longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost, because the more raw you're gonna have, so.
I just saw it, it's twenty-four thousand, so it's amazing.
I also. Um, noted that we can take that money out of the Mary Talbot.
Right.
Funds, you know, try to reduce taxation.
And also the income from them. Okay.
Um, is that second floor, there, is that still being rented to?
Yes.
Have they, are they up to date on their rent?
Yeah, she, she always pays ahead, she pays like two or three months ahead.
Good, that's gonna be the last time.
If I can pay ahead as many.
You can go ahead and pay ahead all you want. Just don't be behind. Okay.
Do you have specific questions, or do you?
No, I mean, I. All the increase in, I'm seeing, it's, it is what it is, I suppose.
I had a comment on the streetlight, though, you know, one of the things that, I don't really know what, what we have there, but. That's a lot of money, is it worth that, with that, thinking about replacing some of these streetlights with LEDs? Which would use, what, a piece of the energy?
Well, we had that conversation a few years ago.
But LEDs have come a long way.
I'm sure when they burn out, they must have to replace them with LEDs now.
It would, my recollection is that we just, we paid per streetlight, but I can have a conversation with Fox Island, I. I haven't had that conversation yet.
I mean, I know right now, it's a sixty watt light bulb in your house, incandescent, you do sixty watt replacement, uses four watts. With LEDs, there's a hell of a change.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Debbie's talking about this, it's not by how much it uses, it's just per streetlight, okay, per.
So the amount just goes up every year?
Apparently.
So it could be renegotiated if we had to, I think.
We wanna make sure it's not double, though.
No, no, no. I can add. Um, I have a question on the airfield, this is probably outside the budget, do you think, is there any updates on that? Case against the town in there?
I haven't heard anything, so, so far, there's just been. That initial action by an attorney that says, you know, we're reserving our right to file a case.
Okay.
That kind, you know, because there are time limits to things like that, so. Uh, I haven't received anything beyond that.
Okay. Alright.
And is there any more discussion about um making, you know, lengthening and widening? The airstrip?
Well, there's always a, a hope, I think, by, and I've got Island Air that will do. You know, that kind of maintenance, but I haven't had any serious conversations with them about any, they don't, there's no proposals on the table.
Well, to, to lengthen it, we're gonna have to get easements where we.
But for safety reasons, they want, you know, we had talked about it, right?
They're gonna want at least longer, right?
And cleared off more on the other side, on the east, eastern side of. Clear off the trees or cut back there more.
Okay.
Wasn't that what we had a discussion on that? vaguely ringing bells. I mean, it was.
But we haven't heard much about that.
It was not gonna be inexpensive, that's. So, but yeah, that hasn't, not been.
I know Andy was talking to, or he was reaching out to the, the buggers about. Getting an easement.
The whole thing was, we were waiting for um. A survey, right, to come out and see, to do something up there, wasn't there something about? We had to see exactly where, whose property we need to go on for. Because some of them already have easements in them for A and B, and we needed to get, I remember there was a talk about. Getting a survey out here to figure out. You know, exactly what we needed to get, right?
Yeah, I thought.
Because there was like a weird mess of property lines that all come together down there.
It's like four.
And Andy was trying to find someone to come over here and it's pretty much impossible to get any surveys to come over here at the time, and what that was. Several over a couple of years ago.
Two years ago, they were impossible, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's what it was. We could barely get someone to come out to do the. The little bit we had to do to get the town garage up there, remember?
No, yeah, yeah.
That was hard enough to get someone out here for.
Well. We'll just. We'll have to investigate it further, I think, because yet something's gonna have to be done.
Well, if they don't want it done anymore, then.
We should at least know what, when, where we can go and what we can do, so that they do come back and ask. I don't wanna make it too long or too long, because it's gonna invite bigger aircraft and then.
Well, I was just.
Personally aircraft, and I don't want that.
Well, no, that, we already. No, we don't want that, but I thought it was just for um a safety issue. To cut back the, you know, trees and.
Well, can we do that? Now, without easements or?
I don't know, Marjorie, do you think there might be some note somewhere from?
In the past, um, we cut down uh. Cut down some trees, we trim, we did some trimming across the road. And it was a matter of just getting permission from the property owner.
Right.
And just doing whatever would be in compliance, well, it's not shoreline zone, so.
Wasn't um conservation easement, I think, that's some of that property on the top of the hill?
Well, I remember we did the work, we just put it out to bid and, and um. I can't remember the specifics of it, but I, I remember it was across. Uh, around the island road, on the other side of the road, um, I remember working with Kevin Waters on it. And he talked to the people that were gonna do the cutting and told them what needed to be done, and it was something about the approach. They needed some cutting done. I, I don't know.
I don't fancy had any notes or any.
Well, I think the last work, I mean, I don't remember what year it was, but Kevin Waters and I went to the legislature, and we had. Four hundred thousand dollars put in the transportation budget for island airports, but it was mostly from a tenicus. But we did something about. But we did something about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars of work on the, on the strip. But I'm, I'm spacing on the exact work that we did, but that was the last major work that was done.
Was that when the lights?
Maybe. Pardon? It was something, yeah, we got a bunch of money, as I said, I know the total was four hundred thousand, but it wasn't all for us, it was for island airports. And I remember going up to the um, state legislature and lobbying for that money, and we got it. Anyway, and most of it went to Matinicus, but I don't remember what year it was, maybe in twenty eleven, twenty twelve. Somewhere in there. And we did, when we did a whole bunch of work on the strip, but I, I'd have to look back and see.
This was on the other end, though. Of this strip, like where the trees were, they wanted to cut some trees down to make it easier to take off and. I thought that the easements were on that end of the strip that were. I mean, cause that's where the. Survey needed to be done down there to figure out whose lines are, were where, that's what I thought, that's where we left.
Was there some action that you wanted me to take on that, or, I mean, I've been talking with Terry Waters, we negotiated the. Contract and. Talking about.
If they haven't mentioned it, then I guess we leave it alone, but.
Okay.
I imagine it's gonna come back up at some point.
Probably we should try and get that survey done, just to see where all the.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if, if we can get that done, at least we have that information, so that when they say, oh, hey, we need this to be longer and wider. Okay, well, we know where, how far.
Where would the money for that come out of?
Well, we have to put it in the budget.
Yeah, I'm not saying it would be this year, but. It's something we're gonna have to think about moving forward.
It makes sense, if you clear one end of the runway, you, why wouldn't you clear the other end?
I was thinking it had something to do with the size of the planes they had.
Yeah, they wanted to add a little, they added, wanted to add like a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty feet. To the actual runway, but then they wanted to cut like an extra double that. Down to certain different, it's like the B and the A parts, and they want some trees. Gone and then some trees, I can't remember the whole thing, but. They did want, there was talk about lengthening the runway by. Pretty much they weren't, where it's clear now, they wanted to make that the runway, then they wanted to. I think, isn't that what it was, they already have it?
Well, it's something that the town's gonna have.
About it so much, I can't believe there are some note somewhere in the. I can go back through the minutes and see if I can.
I think we should probably see how much it would take to get surveyed on that end and just get it done, so we know.
Right.
Maybe we could add that to this year's budget to get, to get a survey.
Which would be under what?
Airfield, right? Town property airfield.
Two years ago.
How much, how much money do you think, ten grand, survey?
Based on the last quarter, I'd say it's at least ten grand.
Five to ten, yeah, at least. Depends if there are three or four different property owners.
Well, we could. If it doesn't get used, it goes into the reserve fund that is there for the next fiscal year. But it probably is something we should have done to figure out.
Well, I just, I thought there was something in there that we needed to have. We need to have it surveyed, so we know where all the easements were and all the different things, I'm pretty sure that that was.
Why don't we check the minutes?
If we, if we could find something in the minutes that'll help us and then move from there, so. Alright, let's move on to law enforcement.
I guess the thing with this is that um, I need to know what your intent is, it, should I put enough in there for two deputies?
I would, I would say we keep it where it was last year, and if they actually hire a second one, then we'll go back to the town and ask them for the money, because it's something that they want. And if they've changed their minds, then. They've changed their mind.
Okay, I, so I'll change that.
I, I think we should just keep it. As we've had it, because we had it for a couple of years, and we never even came close to using it, so let's just keep it where it is.
Yeah, we had a hundred thousand dollar surplus I'm going to.
And that might paint after the meeting on the party first, when we have chat, talk to them.
Right, and, and maybe they, hey, they, they're really gonna have somebody in them, all right, probably put in the budget, but. I'd say we leave it where it is.
Right now.
Cause even this year. Still got like a seventy-two K surplus. Now there's still five months left, but. I did, why is the lodging, is that double because you were thinking? For two deputies, okay, alright, that makes sense.
So I'll put it back down based on one deputy.
So the utilities, I thought we capped that at five K, is that per deputy?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, once we go make those changes, it's gonna stay. Roughly the same as last year.
Uh, yes.
Okay. And there is a fun balance.
I did reduce the gas and oil, because I just didn't see the.
The usage.
Even, even at six dollars a. Allen, I mean.
We just don't have the usage. I mean, if they're not spending nights here, you wouldn't think.
Oh, I wouldn't think they're driving a hundred miles a day, oh dear. It's not seven days a week, it's probably.
Oh, I'm thinking, yeah.
Fifty miles a day.
I was thinking of utility gas and oil, but. Yeah, gasoline up in the vehicle, yeah, there's no way that. Seventy-eight hundred.
The telephone, is that in the office? It's the office phone, yes.
That doesn't even work anymore, does it? The inboxalyzer, can't we cut that out of the budget?
Where's that?
Twenty-two hundred and eighty dollars for a phone line.
Oh, I think that's why we kept the phone line, because it had the, something to do with the.
But it doesn't work anymore, I'm pretty sure, I thought they, when we asked them one time, they said. That it hadn't been serviced so long that. It was outdated, it was something that they don't even use on the mainland anymore, so.
So then, yeah, can we take that out?
I would think so, we should maybe ask them at the meeting.
Meeting, but I think that might be.
I mean, they have cell phones now, I don't think they need the phone up here.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, I mean, it's twenty-three hundred dollars, it's not a lot of money, but if the box light doesn't work, yeah, shouldn't be paying for it.
No, I agree, we shouldn't pay for it, we don't need it.
I'm pretty sure it doesn't work, I'm, I thought it was like.
No, I don't think it does.
Yeah, so then we don't need it.
Yeah, we could get rid of that phone line.
Any more questions or comments on law enforcement?
The call on that one, I didn't really.
Surprised we didn't have that taken out last year.
Maybe it last year, there still was discussion on servicing it. I'll ask, you know, I don't know if it's. Like you say.
I don't.
They all have cell phones, why do we need a phone line when the inboxalyzer isn't working, so.
When you, when you call dispatch, they call. They call them on their cellphone, or they use the radio to get over them, so.
Cell phones work over here now, I'm. Or is it guessing that we don't need to have a?
That makes sense.
At least not a hundred and ninety dollars a month phone, we can get on.
My cellphone bill for four lines is a hundred and eighty-five, so I think we can.
Right, but for one. This is just a landline, you can get them for. From Spectrum. We already have Spectrum service up here, so.
Let me just make sure about it.
Yeah, no, yeah.
There is a separate office that they have.
But we could probably.
Make sure it's not something to tie it in with the fire department or. I just wanna make sure what it is.
No, that's fine.
If the cell service goes down, landlines will normally stay up. They're, they power themselves, right?
If they're not like voiceover in it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make sure what it is, I, but I agree with you.
Is there anything else in the budget you wanna go over tonight?
No, uh, those are the two, well, I did, I redid the, those wage papers that you asked me to redo. And it does now just show a three point six percent increase, when I, you know, you. You noted that I needed to, in order for there to be a comparison, I needed to put those two lines. Uh, fill in those two lines.
So what's about done? Wage line? That was in the admin line?
No, this is those two wage sheets that I had done, I redid. Previous year. Question, why is it fifteen percent more?
We wanted to do it, we should do it, you know, with the statute subsidy. Right up.
Yeah, I mean, we can call it out if we need to, it, it's five hundred.
I have no problem with doing that, I just think it's not for that, it's way too big.
Okay.
In fact, I think the town taxpayers or the whole should subsidize it to a certain extent.
Yeah, I mean, I don't use it, but I'm.
I'm saying what?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still paying into it.
We all benefit from it from.
Right.
Downtown and the harbor.
Yep.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Not right now, I don't, this is much, this is very helpful, though, this benefit sheet. Wages and. Um, alright, so. Back to the agenda. Uh, report of town manager, if you have anything else, Marjorie, that you.
Well, I did, I gave you a, uh, updated budget report for this current year, you know, beyond just what we, we discussed, the professional services, but. You know, other than that, things look pretty good. So these are the figures through the end of January. I mean, I, I guess I just, I don't see any issues, but I, I wanted you to. Be aware, Public Works is pretty close to what, where we should be. I mean, that's the one that, um, that's the only one that's. Pretty close to the uh. I say it should be fifty-eight percent.
Fifty-eight point something.
Fifty-eight point three percent is where we are right now.
About five months to go, for us, five months.
Fifty, and the third is what it is, if you do that. I know you said fifty, so.
In your head, even.
No, I did it on my phone. I thought, I, I said sixty, you just offered to pop my head, just for a rough estimate, but I knew that wasn't right.
Uh, so, you know, if you ever, if you look at this, if you have any questions, please let me know. I think we're in good shape.
We're all going through their budget right now.
You know, I don't know. Uh, I think they've started.
And. They usually just send it over, right, afterwards, and we don't get through.
We don't. You can go up to their budget beams and ask questions, but. Then the only vote, they have a. They do have some sort of a vote up there, school board meeting, but then there's the whole town vote in June on it, so. But if you wanna tweak it, you gotta go to a. We're working on the, you know, the special ed budget and the athletic budget, this workshop or the. You know, building maintenance or something else, or you have to, you have to know what you wanna go up there and. I don't know what it is. But I don't know what the dates are.
It's over forty, so.
I mean, it's. The portion of budgets.
Okay.
Where is it, is it at like fifty percent now?
I mean, last year, the budget, the, the total budget was eight point seven million in there, over four, so. It's approaching fifty percent.
I thought they were damn close to it, it was forty-eight point something, I thought. And then the town budget was.
Three point eight.
Forty. Forty something, and then the Knox County.
That's a big, a big budget from the, from the Knox County.
Yep.
Yours by property tax value, how they figure it, it doesn't go by how many people actually.
Yeah. You're all set on yours, the, your, alright, um, report of members.
What's up? Anybody gonna bring me out in the room up?
Go ahead.
The thing to do about the fire at the quarry and people freaking out.
I didn't even know there was a fire at the quarry.
It was a ice fishing fire to cook hot dogs and whatnot, and they were made to put it out.
What I had suggested to them is rather than bringing it here, that doesn't back. Didn't, didn't the, shouldn't the Pats Commission deal with that, that level, they're the ones that.
Well, no, because if it's against the local ordinance, it's technically Knox County Sheriff's Department supposed to enforce it.
But it's. The quarry is part of the town parks and what Donnie's.
Yeah, I'm saying that, that, that's where, where the, I would thought the year recommendations and so forth would have come from.
But I think there's already an ordinance about. No, no fires.
Yeah, on public land.
From town parks, that's been forever, I mean, I always remember seeing that sign down on Wayne's Island, but. I mean, there's no camping, no open fires, no. Littering, no, whatever, I, I don't know all the rules, but.
So. There's a fire on one of the quarries, the fire department was called.
Mark went and, yes.
It was dispatch. They called dispatch and there was no deputy here.
Okay.
So they asked Mark if he would deal with it.
Anyway, it's aggressively blown up over the last two days, you know, I'm just making everyone aware.
Yeah, I had a visit as well.
What'd you say, Doc?
So I had a visit on that as well.
So. That's all I have.
Right now. Anyone else?
I'm all set.
Okay, I will be adjourned.
Second.
All's a favor.
Two weeks, right?
Two weeks.